Yes, we can hear you now.
Yes, we can hear you now.
Farhan said yes. Stephanie, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
But we can't hear you.
You can't hear me?
No, we can't hear you yet. Alright, so. How about now? Can we hear you now?
I'm here.
There. Alright. Farhan, can you?
Yes, of course.
Oh, perfect. So sorry about that.
Alright, we'll go ahead and start again. The City of Plymouth Planning Commission regular meeting for Thursday, August seventeen point twenty-three is hereby called a order at six thirty-five P. M. Uh, let's please take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Cozart?
President.
Commissioner Moreno?
Present. Present.
Commissioner Mickelson?
Here.
Vice Chair Sullivan is absent tonight. Chair Clackbro.
President.
Thank you.
Could we please stand for the twice? By allegiance to the wire and states of the law and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, every good justice. Alright, move on to item number two, which is approval of the Planning Commission regular meeting agenda for August seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Please review and if I could get a motion in a second for the approval of the regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve as amended, uh, as presented.
Yeah, second. I'll second it. Okay, can we get a roll call vote?
Commissioner Cozart?
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno?
Aye.
Commissioner Mickelson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sullivan, Joe Atson, Chair Clackbro.
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number three, which is public comments. In accordance with the California Government Code, Section five, one nine, five, four dot three, public may address the planning commission on any item concerning subjects matter that is within the commission's jurisdiction. However, no action may be taken on items not posted down the agenda other than to bring to the responder for a step or to, or to correct that the item be placed on a future agenda. And so members of the public participating electronically via this link and wishing to do so may do so during public comment by using the raise your hand feature in the Zoom webinar. When dialing in by the phone, use star nine to raise a load your hand and star six to mute and then mute your phone. Are there any, uh, there's nobody present in the gallery? So anybody else online?
Not at this time.
Alright, we will close a public comment at this time. There are currently no presentations. We'll move on to number five, which is the consent calendar and item five point one, which is approval of the planning commission regular meeting agenda minutes of June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. And, uh, any comments on this item before we make a motion?
Um, yes, Mr. Chair, I have a comment.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I noticed, um, early this morning that there was a mistake in the minutes on one of the votes. Um, I contacted, um, city manager Margaret Roberts. Um, she sent me the Zoom link so I could go through the rest of the minutes. Um, but I was unable to get through that entire Zoom meeting in order to make sure that the rest of the minutes correct. Um, and so I'm asking that the minutes be continued into the next meeting so that the correction to the vote um, for chair is corrected and that any other corrections can be incorporated into the minutes.
Do I have a motion to continue the review of the minutes until the, uh, next meeting, which we have a loaded back?
I'll second that.
I just first need a, uh, motion.
I thought you said you had a motion.
Oh, no, I need a, need a, sorry. Need one.
As that, I'll make that motion.
But a second on motion to continue the planning commission, the approval of the planning commission regular meeting agenda minutes per June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. I'll second that. And a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Cozart?
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno?
Aye.
Commissioner Mickelson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sullivan's absent, Chair Clackbro.
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Moreno, for the due diligence and looking through that. I appreciate that.
Thank you for your consideration of continuing it.
Item number six, public hearings, we have none. Item number seven, unfinished business. First, move the item seven point one, which is a discussion regarding revisions to the Plymouth Municipal Code, Chapter nineteen point nine two subsection nineteen point nine two point five zero subsection B two regarding window signs. And, uh, from the last meeting, we held this over. I know the staff um, took this away and Farhan, would you like to kind of summarize where we're at now?
Yeah. Yes, sir. Thank you. And good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the planning commission. Uh, as, as it was mentioned by the chairman, uh, this was in front of the council back in June fifteenth, twenty, uh, twenty-three. Uh, this is regards to the, uh, the sign ordinance or, or the permanent window signs. Uh, that would be chapter nineteen, uh, subsection nineteen ninety-two, zero, five, zero, B two. Um, the project is in regards to, to the discussion at the, that took place, uh, on the, uh, uh, June fifteenth meeting, uh, and, uh, to see what it could be, uh, how this subsection could be revised in order to serve the, the, the community, in particular, the business community better. And, and, uh, the, the planning commission, um, uh, determined that the existing language, language should be, uh, to, to be, uh, to be looked into, uh, by, by staff and, and to come up with, with options in that regard. Um, I will not get into the back, more of the background because the, the main subject here is, is what is provided to, uh, to you in the staff report on page two, uh, starting with, with the, with four options, starting with the first option indicating then to, uh, as an option, first option to maintain the, uh, the subsection, but eliminate the last sentence, uh, specifically where you say such signs may not be eliminated. As is provided in the staff report, the language would, uh, the revised language will read as follows, permanent with the sign, signs, E. G., hanging on the interior of the window or stenciled in the inside or the outside of the window, not exceeding four square feet, per street frontage shall be permitted. And such signs, uh, should be encouraged to promote business identification hours of operation and address information. That would be the first option, uh, to, uh, to this, to be discussed by the, by the commissioners. The second option would be, um, to, to have the first option minus the last part regarding the hanging of the outside of the window. Third option would be to adopt the first and/or the second option, but amend the limitation of the size uh, of the signage, which is four square feet by enlarging or reducing the four square foot limitation. And the fourth option is to, to have, to have a discretion to allow the business owner to utilize an existing or attractive design for the, that would work for the business for the interior of the window that would fit for the business model. And, and also for the, uh, for the commissioners to discuss and determine, uh, in details, uh, if, if this option is chosen. And staff recommends, uh, for, for the commissioners to, to place that discussion and make a determination for a recommendation to the council at a later stage. The project is considered exempt from, uh, Sequo, uh, Evarmito, uh, review, uh, per section one, five, six, zero, one subsection B three. And, uh, 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 staff recommendation is for the, for the commissions, as I mentioned, I'm sorry, I'm repeating myself, for the commissioner to discuss and make the determination, uh, to see if, if any of the four options would be feasible to, to amend the subsection, uh, and, and forward that decision, um, or majority of the decision to, uh, to the city council for adaptation. I'm open to any, any questions that the commissioners might have.
Alright, thank you very much, um, sir. Appreciate the summary there. And is there any general questions we can get into kind of a debate or discussion afterwards? Uh, after public comment, but, uh, any initial, just basic questions before we move into public comment? And then we move into kind of the, uh, discussion after that. Alright, um, there's nobody in the gallery, continue to be, so we'll move on to the Zoom. Uh, anybody on Zoom? Looks like we have one user. Anybody would like to make a comment on this, uh, subject? And if you're on mute, would like to make a comment, either take yourself off mute or press raise your hand, um, via the Zoom. Alright, here we got an online as well as nobody in the gallery. Go ahead, move to just overall discussion on the matter by the, uh, commissioners. Um, first we'll go to Commissioner Mickelson. Any comments or questions?
It's just for all, but thank you, Peter. We should help the option. I'm not sure any question that I do have a, an option that I.
However you want, you could, you could present your option and discuss that along with these as well.
In review of all the options, for me, I really like option one. I think it allows us, uh, gives the business owner some opportunity to chat, to assist in signs and especially signs. But it also still provides some consistency, uh, throughout that town, which I think is important. I do think that by allowing it to be up to individual business, it could see just, uh, its magic and science and media, it's had a look at consistency.
Alright, thank you. Um, let's go to Commissioner Moreno. On Zoom. Any comments or questions?
Um, yes, um, I have a couple of comments. I've done some more research on sign ordinances in general since, um, this was last on our agenda. And, um, since there is no time sensitivity to this issue any longer, is that correct? Um, the person that, um, that this started this discussion has changed their sign, is that correct? Mr. Moreno, okay. So, um, I'd like to propose that, um, a couple of things. One is that the current sign ordinance be reviewed by council to make sure it's in compliance with the recent Supreme Court decisions regarding content neutral signage. Um, I'm not sure if, um, everything in here is that. It may be, but I noticed there's different sign sizes and illumination for different kinds of signs. There's also a prohibition on certain kinds of signs in certain kind of areas. So I just would like to know that council has reviewed it to identify any areas that might be out of compliance with the Supreme Court, um, decision. Um, the most recent one, I believe, was City of Austin, Texas versus Reagan National Advertising of Austin. Um, there was a previous one, Reed versus Town of Gilbert, Arizona. So that's my first suggestion. My second suggestion is that, um, we do, um, inventory of the signs that are in town that businesses have already so that we are not unintentionally creating an out of compliance situation for someone else. It's possible that we'll change this ordinance and then make somebody else's sign out of compliance. Normally, that would be a legal non-conforming use, but I hate to force someone into a legal non-conforming use if it's not necessary. Um, it's possible that everybody is already in compliance, but from what I've heard, there are probably other businesses that um, have not, um, necessarily, um, measured their signs against the ordinance. So I'd like to have um, staff, um, do an inventory of the signs with the business owners. That could be easily done by just, um, sending them an email and asking them to report the signs. It does not have to be a site visit, but I'd like to see that, that those two categories of information in place before we decide to make changes to the sign ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the follow-up on the question, do we know if there's other sites that are not compliant? They are, uh, not within the current code or recommended code? Um, let's move on to comments or questions by Commissioner Cozart.
Option. I'm sorry, it's. Hold on. Uh, option one and two think pretty much take in consideration three. Uh, because the only difference in that would be one of the same do with four square feet. Three says maybe we'll amend four square feet. Is four square feet set up in other ordinances as to? I'm not familiar with why it would be four because some of the windows are much larger than others. And I was looking for a little more information on why it's four square feet versus could be determined by what's going on. Uh, so that was my comments on the first three, which I think have to be kind of jumped together in the function. Um, we discussed, so.
Thank you. Farhan, are you aware of, is the four square feet? Is that a comment by practice or any comments on that?
Um, that for the tunnel Plymouth, that needs to be investigated. I need to go through the rest of the, uh, of the MUDI code. Um, but I, I believe the four square feet option is in regards to the window signage, in particular, this subsection. Um, you know, for an area of two by two, uh, for, for a window, uh, window placement. Um, but to, uh, to, to, to answer that question directly, uh, I, I, I have to look into the rest of the MUDI code to see if there's any, any other kind of, uh, uh, I, I'm, I'm confident that there are, uh, uh, limitations regarding this, uh, the signage, whether it's a pool signage on the outside or, or wall signage or window signage, uh, that there are some limitations, but it, in, in regards to its compatibility with the four square feet, I'm not certain of that. I believe this four square feet was determined initially for the, for this subsection, for the, for the, uh, hanging window signage.
And of course, looks like the current, the current code, the four square feet is there. We're not, we wouldn't be changing that. We're just, we're, uh, eliminating the, the illumination part of that statement, correct?
Well, you have that option, correct, and that would be the first option.
As an option, okay. Um, yeah, I would, then, uh, thank you very much, Commissioner. Um, I would support an option one as well. I think, uh, it still leaves enough room for like, you know, signage businesses to promote their, their business via the signage. Uh, we're not by any means changing sub-significance of the code. Uh, so I would, I would support a, a, uh, motion to uh, select option one, but I would also support Commissioner Moreno's, uh, comment to take the, the code as a whole to, to make sure we're not in, out of compliance with the say, recent Supreme Court decisions. I don't know what those decisions were, but I think there may be two separate issues. One is kind of the, the code compliance overall versus this very specific, uh, amendment related to illumination of window signs.
That helps me understand that he's got it right. Proceed on.
Yeah, and I also agree with what. You know, I do agree with, I think, Commissioner, that it does need to be looked at overall, the whole side ordinance. But I also think that we do need to have the specific request for the rights. And I think that at this point, we may not have somebody that's, one person is brought up, may take care of it, might be in the business today one day. And I do think that it's a minor change to the ordinance that could solve some problems because the older view of the signing program will probably take sometime. So I would like to, at least address this specific issue today and maybe long-term, but the whole process.
Alright, any additional comments? And if, if there are, I, we would, uh, do I have a motion to pursue in my direction?
I guess it's kind of a complicated motion, but I do, uh, I move to approve this resolution, which is the existing language taking out the limitation part. Uh, and then add to that, that setting or requesting city council, okay, the overall signing program throughout the city.
And then Farhan, we, we need to have those two separate, like, motions or any recommendation of how that would be stated?
Right, Mr. Chair. I mean, uh, you could, you could have a vote, uh, for, uh, for, for the purpose of this subsection, uh, separately and then getting to, um, to evaluate the, uh, the suggestion that was provided by Commissioner Moreno regarding the, um, um, two sections. One is regarding the, as the site ordinance, orders to be, uh, uh, reviewed by the city council, possibly the city attorney for in compliance with the Supreme Court decision. And the latter part would be regarding an inventory of the signs in town, uh, and, uh, uh, I would certainly would defer to, uh, to the minutes later on to, to find this specific language on that.
So I think there would be maybe amending the motion to, to, let's do the separate, separate motions.
I, I move to change my motion to accepting the first option of the side ordinance, uh, which basically is the existing language minus, uh, therefore, it's something.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll stick it there.
Yeah, a roll call vote on that motion.
Commissioner Moreno has her hand up, so I'm wondering if she has a comment before we go on that.
Um, yes, I do. Um, I believe that we are not allowed to make the change. All we can do is recommend that staff bring back, uh, draft ordinance for approval. All we can do is recommend that staff bring back draft ordinance for approval because this is an ordinance change. We can't do it without a public hearing. So if if the motion could be recrafted to say that you're requesting staff bring back the the change in form of the ordinance with the required, if there's a, if there is required a public hearing that they do that, but if not, that they have the resolution and then it gets referred to the city council for adoption, I believe. Isn't that correct? Mr. Morezavi?
That is partially correct, Commissioner Moreno. This, this is, the next step would be for the city council adaptation. And hence, I recommend that to the to the chair to to separate the the comments regarding the 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 site orders to be reviewed by the council for the Supreme Court's compliance and also the inventory of the signage. But when it comes to the planning commission process of making a decision or determination for a recommendation to the council, in particular for this for this subsection, I believe, again, that could be checked with the county, not county council, I'm so sorry, with city attorney in regards to making a determination for whether to to vote on the first option or not.
Yeah, my question is just about semantics, if the motion should read that we're recommending that the city council change the ordinance or that we're recommending that staff bring it back in an ordinance form. I don't know what the process is for the city. I just, it's a semantics, not trying to change the what the the proposal is, but just to change the semantics regarding it, so it's in compliance.
If we take one more shot at just the the motion, again, just to say we're as a commissioner recommending to the city council.
I I move that we recommend to the city council first option of the staff report, existing language minus prohibition on the designated by.
Right.
Thank you.
Very good. We have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Cozart?
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno?
Hi.
Commissioner Mickelson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sullivan is absent, Chair Clapprow?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passed. And Commissioner Moreno, you cut out a little bit, were you saying hi?
Yes, I said I.
Okay, thank you.
I'm having difficulty hearing Commissioner Mickelson as well. I don't know if that if there's still some acoustic issues in here.
I second that, Commissioner Moreno. I'm having some difficulties understanding the other three commissioners as well.
Okay, we'll try and talk into the microphone. Let's, if we could now address the second motion, which would be the review of the. If somebody wishes to make a motion on that.
I'll make a motion, make a motion that we recommended the city council that the sign ordinance be reviewed for compliance with recent case law and that that they consider requesting staff conduct a site inventory of signs within the city of Plymouth in order to make sure that future changes to the sign ordinance are in the best interest of the business community. Does that work? Does that work? Okay, I'm open to amendments if that doesn't work, okay.
Well stated, may I add comments or things? All right, let's state it then. We have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Cozart?
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno?
Hi.
Commissioner Mickelson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sullivan is absent, Chair Clapprow?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passed.
And I want to thank our planning director for including municipal code. Again, there as well, that helps to actualize the conversation. Thank you for that. And we're going to move on to item seven point two regarding the city council assignment of the fighting commission for public convenience or necessity for PCN applications and amendment of the Plymouth Municipal Code. And we have the planning director who can say background aside again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As this was discussed previously at the last planning commission meeting regarding this project back on June fifteenth, this all initiated and again, very briefly in regards to the background of of what was in front of the council and it is right now with this item seven point two is generated with a letter from from the state on January thirty first of this year. And two months later, on March twenty ninth, the city council determined that the planning commission to be assigned for the project and also to look into. After the discussion by the by the commissioners on June fifteenth, it was it was determined that the policy pertaining to the land use permit process should be amended in in order to include the PCN applications to be included as part of the subsection, chapter nineteen, subsection zero four point one four zero, which is in regards to land use determination. And there is a table including that, which is also included in your staff report on page two and three. And towards the page three of it, of the of the table, you see the 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 change at the very bottom of the page in regards to making the change in into the subsection of that, the table of the subsection to include public convenience or necessity tops of application. The the planning director would be the the recommendation body and also the next, the next part of the row would indicate that the final decision would be rendered by the planning commission. And that also refers to the the subsection that is included in the on that table as an as part of the adaptation, which is the same same chapter, subsection six zero point zero three zero, which is pertaining or related to allowed land uses and permit requirements. Staff recommends that the 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 planning commission review the staff report and discuss the matter within themselves and make a recommendation for the city council to amend the municipal municipal code. The there is no fiscal impact by this project for the city of Plymouth. And lastly, the project is exempt from from environmental review, CCO guidelines, section fifteen oh six one, subsection B three. I'm open to any questions that commissioners might have.
All right, thank you, planning director. Before we move to public comment, any general questions before we get into the discussion after public comment? All right, any question? We do have a member of the gallery, questions in the gallery. The questions on Zoom, feel free to raise your hand, press star nine on you.
Stephanie has her hand up.
Oh. All right, let's, we're going to close public comment. We have nobody in the gallery, they'll tune yours, just raise your hand, remove the public comment. We'll start with Commissioner Moreno with her hand raised, thank you.
She's muted.
Excuse me, thank you. I'm in agreement with the public convenience or necessity change to the the table. I just realized this nine points, nineteen point six oh point oh three O, is there additional language on that? Is that? I didn't realize that we added additional language. Is that in the packet?
I'm double checking the municipal code, Commissioner Moreno, as 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 we discussed. The that the loud land uses and permitted requirements was in the initial staff report. I'm just double checking here and I know that I presented that to the to the commissioners at the last hearing. If you don't mind, only one second please.
My other question while you're looking that up, or my concern, I should say, is that the the table is flawed in that it indicates that the planning director is the final decision making body in some cases and that the planning commission is a final decision making body. And that isn't accurate because decisions can be appealed. The final decision making body for all of these decisions is the city council. So I'm wondering if we have, if we can suggest a different term for the the first, you know, the the first decision making body or decision making body and have an asterisk that can be subjected to to appeal. So the public doesn't get the false impression that the planning director's word is final say. That's one one thing. The second thing is it says that, and this, I know this was in there already, but if we're going to be amending the code, I think we should make it right. The planning director is not the final decision making body unofficial quote interpretation. There aren't allowed to interpret the codes. That's the city council or the attorney's role in interpreting the code if there's any question regarding it, as far as I'm aware. So I'd like to suggest that we recommend to the city council when we put this forward that they review the terminology that they use to make it clear to members of the public what the actual process is in decision making. Thank you.
If I may address that to the to the panel, to the planning commission? That's a very good suggestion, Commissioner Moreno. I do see the flaw in the existing table, table nineteen point zero four point one four zero hyphen one or dash one, because at the very top, and and you do have this on your staff report, commissioners on page two, at the very top, you you see that it says designated approving authority or standing for recommending body, F for final decision making body. I believe this table could be amended by adding an aesthetic, aesthetic indicating that any decision by the planning director or the planning commission is not a final this final decision of of the project's process because it could be appealed to the next level, meaning what? Meaning that a decision by a planning director could be could be appealed to the planning commission and or the decision of planning director and planning commission and could be appealed to the city council and the city council would be the final approval. I believe if we put the final or the F for all of the of the rows for the city council, I I believe, in my experience, that would make it very, very confusing for 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 the person that is reading the the municipal code.
I think you could comment on that in that the page, page one says the municipal code section actually has the code under section A, the designated approving authority. Does it cover us where it says an action of the approving authority, which is in the chart, may be appealed pursuant to the procedures set forth in nineteen dot oh four dot one six oh appeals? So the the table is basically saying, these are, these are the approving authorities. Those can certainly be appealed according to the current code or the current municipal code. So I think we're covered in the sense that it's saying that there's an appeals process in built in the code today.
Yes, but a member of the public will often be handed just this matrix. And it's not going to say that in this matrix. So if we add it in here that, or took out the word final and just said decision making body and then put in an asterisk saying all 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 decisions by the planning director and or planning commissioner are subject to appeal to the city council, then it would be clear to a member of the public, they don't have to dig through the ordinance because most likely they're just going to get handed this matrix when it's decide how to work that.
Thank you. Yeah, personally, I don't think it, I don't think it needs to be changed. I think there's an appeals process through that process. The a member of the the public can, you know, submit an appeal, then it goes through the appeals to find. Let's go for other comments. Commissioner Cozart, any additional comments?
Through through the chair.
You've covered it pretty good because it's tough to review each case. And I think it's set up so that it would be brought in for discussion. Thank you.
Let's move to Commissioner Mickelson, just for comments.
Overall, I agree and recommend that we can change the city council to change this book of bottom page. She has to go to the foundation. And I also agree that as long as the appeal process is listed somewhere on this, I think it's required. We can change the draft itself of the table, so.
All right. And again, I I think it's, I think it's sufficient the way it is. I think if a member of the community wanted to look at the municipal code, they would read sections A and B if they so choose to do that and they would be. Honestly, I think, you know, if I'm a member of the public, I'm just gonna apply for whatever I need to apply for and see what happens, honestly. Really many flex to go do that, but hopefully they do. But I I don't see any confusion.
Actually, Mr. Chair, if I could say that there's a lot of people that give up on the planning process because it's so cumbersome and difficult. They're handed a piece of paper to try to figure things out or they're given misleading information, such as the person that wanted to put the sign in their window was given when this all started. I think whatever we can do to make that process more transparent and clearer allows more businesses to come into town and not give up before they get to the end. Somebody that has a a problem with a particular planning director, as some people did with the last planning director, may choose not to make an application because they're afraid it'll just get denied. And I hate to see that happen. I I don't see why it's so difficult to take the word final out and just put decision making body in these columns so that it doesn't imply that these are final decisions. It doesn't say anywhere on here that that it just says that decision, what what did you read? An action of the approving authority may be appealed. But you're you're using the terms approving authority and then you change over to decision making body and recommending body.
I just disagree. I just don't think it's gonna would change the outcome of the of the process for a business to come into town based upon the F in the column.
It would be, it'd be useful if you would talk to some of the people who have walked away from permits in this town.
I have talked to people who want to become great business to the town.
Right, but have you talked to anyone that had their permits denied?
I have not, but I know, again, this is my opinion. I do not believe that having changing from final to decision is going to make a difference yet. Point noted. Do I have a whip point where somebody can make a motion if they so choose to move ahead with a certain check in short language?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the the whole of that sentence.
Yeah, considering that we're appeared were at the end of the comment phase by the commissioners, we're at the point now, somebody would like to make a motion describing a potential item they'd like to bring forth for a change, feel free to do so down.
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion then when it's time. Make a motion that the the planning commission accept the recommendation made by the planning director to add the ABC licensing process to, what it, what is it actually called here? Not finding it on the thing, the ABC license permit, PNC. Add it to the table matrix, but at the same time, recommend the city council consider making the table a little bit easier to understand for the general person that is attempting to get a permit for the city.
Do I have a second to that motion? All right, do we have another? All right. Do we have another? It appears that we don't have a second. Is there another motion that can be made from the commission to move forward with this item?
I know that we recommend change to the municipal code, which our ask is to council at PCNs be reviewed by the planning commission.
But a second to that motion. Let's make it that. We have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Cozart?
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno?
Stain?
Commissioner Nicholson?
Yes.
Vice President Ms. Edison, Sheriff Popper?
Yes. Okay, now that we're done with consent calendar items, we will move to new business, which we have done. And go ahead and move to reports and we'll start with city staff and the additional reports or information to share.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Did you make a suggestion that the reports to be started by city staff?
Yeah, it's getting reports from city staff to be shared. Correct. Can you hear us far enough?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm looking at the section nine indicating reports and I see city staff as bullet point I was waiting for city staff other than planning director because I see it. If not at all, so if it is for my report, I apologize. So let me start up by reporting to the commissioners in regards to the to the housing element update that just recently has been submitted by the by the consultant that is, the name of the consultant is Dino planning from Sacramento. They've been working diligently for the housing element update for not only city of Plymouth, this is a combined effort for for different municipalities headed by Amador County. And the finding is that the planner, the project planner has indicated that the two sites across the city hall. Well, let me, let me, let me just walk back a little bit. As some of the commissioners or all commissioners, they might be aware that the the housing element update for city of Plymouth includes, and this is based on the state mandate by the Reno numbers or regional housing needs allocation numbers. For city of Plymouth, there's a need for the next cycle of the housing element update, which is for the eight years period. For Plymouth, the city is in need of seven very low, five units of low, five units of moderate and thirteen units of above moderate for city of Plymouth for a total of thirty. And with one caveat, and that has been communicated with city, including myself in regards to the to the fact that one of the or I should say two of the parcels that was determined initially in the housing element update for city of Plymouth included two sites that is they're literally across the city hall and they're adjacent to the main street park. One, as you all know, is a Papa Plaza and the other one is a vacant site, vacant site. And it seemed after, after all all the consideration that these are found to be constraints. And the planner or Dino planning determined that this might be an issue for HCD or Housing and Community Development Department to to approve or slash certify this document. So hence is recommended to be taken out of the inventory. However, just just to conclude, the Dino planning indicated that by next week they will have a final version of the documents and it would be forwarded for each jurisdiction's process for it to be ready for adaptation. Once that takes place, this would brought up to the attention of the planning commission and the next step after that would be presentation in front of the city council.
Thank you, lady director. So just in summary, yeah, that housing element update, this eight year process, we have to designate certain parcels of land for certain uses. And part of that you're saying is there's been two lots designated for certain use that we don't feel is adequate. So we need to look at alternatives and you'll break those to a future meeting.
Correct. It's been determined that those are going to be, those two parcels are going to be constraints for the adaptation of Plymouth's housing element.
Any comments or questions?
Yeah, I'd like some clarification and I know Mr. Moreno, Zavi, you were not here when the housing element got sent out the first time. Is that correct?
Right.
But during that public hearing, the city council directed staff to move the sites from where they had picked, I believe, to sites out there at the old San Point location. I was unaware that there were two sites across from city hall. Are the two sites across from city hall because they were not indicated on the map that was given to the city council planning commission, I do not believe. Were those the only sites that were picked and put in the housing element or they're just two of several sites that were in there and those two HCD has a problem with?
I believe is a ladder, Commissioner Moreno, there were two of the list of sites that was selected.
Okay. Could you verify what lots the city council had directed be removed from the plan and added to the plan at the hearing to make sure that that got taken care of before sent to HCD?
Certainly.
Because I don't recall any discussion about the city's parking lot and the city's pop-up plaza being zoned to check a box for HCD housing in that public hearing. But I could have missed it, but I don't recall any discussion of that. Thank you.
Well, I can do it. Thank you.
And Commissioner Moreno probably has a better memory than I do. Was this the same conversation would be selected to to other like another area for the certain type of housing element that would eat there as I said.
Yeah, it was the January hearing and the city staff had selected two lots that they had not contacted the property owner about. I don't remember the specific location of one, but I know one of was on the corner of highway forty nine and E sixteen. And he got up and protested that. And the city council directed staff to take it out. And I believe the owners of the the Plymouth mine property out there, which in disclosure is related to me, not financially related, but related to me. Indicated at the time, they would be willing to have their properties take the place. I don't know if you remember that, Bill, in that.
Yes, I do. That's where I was thinking that. Yeah.
Right. Their property would have more than covered the thirty housing units that was needed. So I'm confused as how these two city lots ended up in the mix. If they just weren't pointed out at the time and they were always there or if staff decided to put them in instead of the mine property. So that would be, I'd just like to backtrack and make sure that that what the city council directed in the first place, it happened in the housing element.
Yeah, I think because I, well, positively, we had made a decision on that point that we use the alternative lot at the time.
Right.
It's maybe a non-issue. All right. Any other comments by the planning director?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there was, I'm looking to my notes, please. Commissioner Murres in an email suggested that the commissioners to have an open discussion in regards to how things are going to be scheduled for the planning commission agenda. And whether it's process for other commissioners to be able to provide input into that or request items to be, for the items to be put in, put on the planning commission agenda. Just needed to indicate that because it was brought up.
Yeah, that sounds good. Yeah, we can certainly discuss that only now. I think that this report section is one place we can advise or bring up issues that may belong on a future agenda. Through email communication processes. But other than their other forms or any other comments from the commissioners on thoughts around that?
None here. None here.
I think it's probably a good area of discussion. I think it'd be important that all commissioners be present.
Right. If there are any additional comments or thoughts around having a full body present?
I'm sorry, I missed that. I have any thoughts about what?
Having, so Commissioner Nichols suggested it likely would be a great discussion, but it would be good to have the full body present, the commission present.
For how to handle the agendas and the items, is that what you're talking about? Yes, of course. I'd like all the planning commission members to be able to participate in that discussion. I think I brought it up at the last planning commission meeting as well. Not just in an email, but I think I brought it up at the last meeting.
Yeah, it's not necessarily a voting item. I think it's just a discussion item, right? So is that, I think that's something.
I'd actually like to see a policy of how things get on the agenda because as I mentioned, I've struggled to get items on the agenda for the last three years. Things that I think are important to the community development of the town and things that other residents and business owners have brought to me as concerns. And I think that there should be a method by which, you know, those things can be discussed on the planning commission agenda. That's what we're appointed to do is to to discuss items of concern and how the city can be approved and its development process and improved and how it interacts with. I just think these are important things and I'd like to see it agendized that obviously we don't need a policy to start with. I think the discussion would bring about a policy, perhaps.
Okay, planning director or city staff, would you like if we were to add that discussion, which area would we put then? Could we add that to the next agenda?
You could, at the discretion of the commissioners, you could have that included as a discussion matter, agendized for the next planning commission meeting.
Okay. I would recommend you do that. It's a good suggestion and then hopefully we'll have a rest of mission body here. We can have open discussion. Any other questions or comments by the other commissioners? Commissioner Moreno?
I do have a comment. I believe city manager Roberts indicated the next planning commission was going to be the first Thursday of September and as you know, I have a longstanding work commitment on that night and cannot make a meeting. She said that the housing element would be brought back. So I'd ask consideration from the city council that we stick to the third Thursday timeframe. And if that doesn't work for another city council member, maybe we can have a special meeting on a different day that works for all five of us. I would greatly appreciate that consideration for something as important as the housing element. Thank you.
Any other comments? Commissioner Nicholson? Okay. All right, having gone through the reports and comments, I'll move to adjourn the meeting of the city of Plymouth. Planning Commission seven thirty three again.